Okay, have you sealed the minutes?
They opened? No, they haven't done that yet.
We'll do, we're gonna seal the minutes when we have some people. Because if the tree falls in the forest.
Yeah, so they just want to start doing some of this stuff to lead up to the public hearing.
Okay, so, um, did anybody second my motion?
Second.
All right.
Okay, so we missed that whole motion, so.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm in favor. So basically, the motion Diane was to allow the rec commission to host a townwide yard sale on October 10.
Is that background noise coming from?
Larry.
Oh, sorry, hold on, hold on.
So Charlie seconded that?
Yes, I think.
Yep.
Okay. Alright.
The, um, so I'm looking on the agenda. The, um, I'm gonna jump around on the agenda, but, um, maybe when Larry comes back, he wants to give us the EOC update. Unless.
Oh, I don't have it. Trish has it.
Okay, so we'll wait for Trish. Okay, B was procedural corrections from September 1st. We can do this one. So I think what we found out was, remember how we all got together and voted on who the selectmen pro temps were? Turns out, we didn't have to vote. You could basically, any one of us could pick who we wanted.
Okay, that's further down. This is the one with September 1st where you went into non-public and you shouldn't have.
Oh, even better. Okay.
So why don't I just read what I wrote, what I think we need to add into the.
Please do it.
Okay. So, um, on September 1st, the board of selectmen met in non-public and, um, by mistake. So the board re, so what I'm doing is reading in the minutes that, um, should be into the public version for the September 1st, which will actually go into the September 15th public minutes. So the board reviewed the proposal from Suburban Propane for oil and propane for the 2020, 2020, 21 heating season. Selectmen Gonya stated that the service provided by Suburban Propane has been good. Selectmen Foot asked why we do not go out to bid. Selectmen Gonya stated that the contract was for one year and to see if the town was happy with them. The policy states that the board can enter into a one-year contract with the same vendor up to three times. After the third contract, the board needs to go out to bid. Selectmen Gonya moved to accept the one-year fixed price for 6,000 gallons of number two heating oil at $2.05 per gallon and for 4,500 gallons of propane at $1.47 per gallon from September 1st, 2020 through May 31st, 2021, seconded by Selectmen Foot, Bowel A, Gonya A, Foot A, and Melvin A. Then we went on to do the memorandum of understanding. Chairman Bowell reviewed the memorandum of understanding for a school resource officer between the town chief of police and Sanborn Regional School District. He stated that the MOU is not a contract, but an understanding between parties that will work on a contract. Chairman Bowell and Selectmen Gonya stated that Selectman Melvin, because he is on both of, both of the board of selectmen and school board committee, he should recuse himself from one of the boards while the town negotiates with the school for the SRO. Selectman Melvin stated that he will do what is best for both the town and the school district. Selectman Melvin stated that the SROU salary should be paid by the school district. Chairman Bowell stated that the town will hire the SRO and the officer would be a part of the town's police force. When not working for the school, the officer would be available to work in the town. Chairman Bowell will work with Chief Jewett and Superintendent Ambrose on the MOU. He will then work on the contract to provide to town council for review.
So essentially, we went in under a, um, we wrote our own statute and we went in 91 AZ or something like that. And that should have been 91 AC, correct?
Yes, it should have been. There is no such thing as negotiations, contract negotiations.
So when we talk about contracts, and Sumner has advised me on this before, when you're in a contract negotiation, you go under 91 AC because you're talking about reputations and by choosing one party over another party, in a sense, you can be accused of harming their reputation. So, so basically, we need a motion to, what do we need here Diane? A motion to change the minutes to reflect 91 AC? Is that the deal?
No, I think you're all set. This covers, this should cover you because we put it into the minutes that we just, you're not gonna have any of those in the non-public. It'll be in the public minutes for September 15.
Okay, perfect. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so, the, um, that was B under C. I know we gave the chief, let the chief go, but I think we can cover C pretty quickly on police details. This is what I, I asked to have added, right?
Yep.
So.
If I can get them back?
No, not necessary, but, um, basically, here's all this is. I think we had a, we had budgeted police details for elections, right? Was it that specific?
Yep.
What was it, like $200 or something?
No, I think we had a thousand and we kind of broke it up between full and pot time, 500 each.
So the problem is, in a, in a presidential year, we have four elections. Next year, we're gonna have one election. The year after, we have three. So we keep doing the same line item. So, or the same amount. So essentially, I think we've already blown the $1,000 for 2020. So we need the board to approve moving more money in for police details for elections and then make sure in upcoming budgets, we reflect properly what's going on. The, the chief, just so you know, the police chief, you know, he's always willing to work with us, so he's not particularly, he's, he's gonna make sure the officers are there and we can work out the budget later. He even volunteered to take it on as his budget, which he shouldn't have to do, right? But there is a town detail amount, right, which is $40, I believe. So, um, my question is, is the board all right if we, we beef, beef up this line item to get us through November 3rd?
Matt, we gonna take money from?
Well, there we go. That's the question of the hour. So.
I, I would suggest that we take it from the police department budget and if we have to readjust as we get closer to the end of the year, we can do that. I mean, it's more appropriate to come from that budget since it is details, even though it's for, you know, the town. We can't take that from the special revenue fund, the revolving account.
Right.
And we'll just have to see where we stand at the end of the year and if we need to readjust or reallocate money to, to cover that, we can do that at that time.
What's the board think?
That's fine with me.
So, um, do we have any, I doubt we have any actual numbers to share tonight, right?
I think the budget spreadsheets are on the shared. I think Diane put those on recently.
So, so it shows what we've actually spent on details for the elections?
Um, I think everything's been in there. I'm not sure.
Let me check.
Hey, hey Matt, why can't we take it out of legal?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We can do it later in the year. Let's see where he stands. He may have funds in there at the end of the year. I don't know.
I don't know. And I'd hate to upset him.
No, I don't think it'll upset him. Well, we can reallocate or re, um, you know, make that adjustment later on. It's not a big deal to just take from one budget to another.
Yeah, but we'll either forget about it or not do it.
No, you've got a good bookkeeper. You're not gonna forget about it.
So I'm in the police department. Let me share this to those of you that have. On that one. So this is the police department budget?
Right.
Is that the one we're looking for?
Yep.
Really, um, we're looking for town details. So if we had a $1,000 budget for 2024, details on behalf of the town, how have we spent against that? My, my guesses were almost to zero.
Yeah, see the full time? So full time's at 480, we had 500, pot time's 500, we've spent 336.
Yep. So, and again, um, these parentheticals don't mean what they're supposed to mean, right?
No, because you still have that next election and we were only using like one or two police officers in the past. Now I, I'm being told with the, you know, directions and everything down at the other location, they've used probably four or five officers.
Right, so what I mean is normally when you have $20 in a parenthetical, that means we're negative on that account, $20, right?
No, that, they, it's just the opposite of what you think. So right now, we, between those two, we have $184 left.
Okay, so side note here? Can we fix that someday?
Matt, that's the way the accounting system goes. That's what the auditors do. That's the way they show it. It always looks reversed to what we do.
Right, but, but in the rest of the world, accountants, it means the opposite to the rest of the world.
No, I talked to the accountants and Kim says the same thing. That's the way it reads. It shows that money is available.
Alright.
Otherwise, it'd be a minus.
I have to get part of my education refunded then, because they told me the wrong thing. So, so 184 bucks is what we have left.
Right, but look at the travel. He hasn't used anything, so he could come out of that.
True, I don't think they're traveling anywhere.
No.
So, so I guess, I guess what I propose to the board, if the board's okay with it, is we, we need to, uh, we need to beef up this line item and track it appropriately. Just so we know what to plan for in upcoming years. So, I mean, you're, you're looking at November 3rd, a 12-hour day. Conceivably, you know, if, if the chief helps out, he's already getting paid, he's on salary. But if we have a traffic jam like we've had, like we're, we're afraid we're gonna have, then we're gonna need some more money in that account.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see where there's quarter time police officers that need to be there.
Well, I don't think they were there simultaneously. They were.
Shifts.
They shared, it was shifts.
Yeah, the, uh, I think Cindy did an eight-hour shift and then she left.
She didn't do an eight-hour shift.
No.
That day, she was, I think she did four hours, she left, but you had the sergeant there for part of it, but, um, you know, the police chief can tell us later on, but my understanding is it was, um, it was not, it was not 12 hours of four officers.
Because Larry was doing most of the directions.
Yeah, he, he did a great job too. He had his chair.
Yep.
He had an umbrella, I think.
No, no umbrella. So Matt, the, uh, what I saw was Jewett was working already and the sergeant was working already. Cindy came in for four hours and then when she left, the other guy came in. But I'm not sure if he was second shift or he was coming for the election, so I think the most was one in the daytime and then whatever they did on second shift, I don't know, I went home.
Yeah. I, I think you're right. And then the, you know, the fear was a huge traffic, um, you know, a, a line of traffic going out to Merrimack Road and stuff, so they just don't know. And I think we can, once we get Bob Dismelick on the horn here in a couple of, whatever, couple of minutes, we should maybe ask him his thoughts, but, but it sounds like, you know, does the board agree we need to, we need to track this stuff and make sure it's accounted for? I think everybody agrees, right?
Yeah. Definitely.
Okay. Alright. So there was that one.
You could go through to the manifest.
Matt, we didn't make a decision about where we're gonna take the money from. You wanna take the money from the private?
I think we have to know. I think we have to know how much it is before we decide where it's coming from. If, if, am I off base there? Like if I, if we get a bill on November 4th, can we make a decision then where the money comes from, Nancy?
Yeah, yeah, we can do it later on, yeah. It's just, it's just an adjustment that the bookkeeper can make.
Okay.
Okay, we can wait.
Great. So Diane's volunteering vendor manifest, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we wanna do those? Does, uh, anybody have those in front of them?
I don't. Diane, I need the VPN username again, sorry.
The VPN username?
He's Foot L.
That traffic, the traffic light I gotta sign on.
It's your, are you at the town hall?
No, I'm at home.
Then it's your username that you use to log in, L Foot. And then whatever your password is.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm gonna do the first couple, because I can see them on the screen. Thank you, Diane. So I'm gonna move to sign vendor manifest dated September 15, 2020, in the amount of $59,520.81.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Charlie. Let's do a roll call vote. Larry, how do you vote?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And Matt's and I. I'll do the second one. And I move to sign the cable vendor manifest dated September 15, 2020, in the amount of $4,600 and $656.01.
Second.
Uh, seconded by Larry. All in favor? Or I'm sorry, Charlies and I, Larry's and I, Matt's and I, I think I heard. The very, uh, very awkward roll call vote, but that works. The, I'm gonna move to sign the highway construction revolving fund manifest dated, uh, September 15, 2020, in the amount of $40,436.32.
Second.
Alright, seconded by Charlie. Roll call vote, Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And Matt's and I. Larry, are you online yet?
Uh, I'm on the, I'm on today's meeting. What do you need?
I didn't know if you were ready to. I'll just keep reading them. I'm gonna move to sign the police special detail revolving fund manifest dated September 15, 2020, in the amount of $807.47.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call vote, Larry?
Hi.
Uh, Charlie?
Hi.
Matt's and I. That one passes unanimously. Gonna move to sign the payroll manifest for pay period August 30th through September 12th, 2020, with a paid date of September 17th, 2020. Anybody wanna second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry. Gonna do a roll call vote. Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
And Matt's and I. Do the veterans tax credit. We have one. So I'm gonna move to sign the veterans tax credit for tax map 7-7-3 for year 2021. Can I get a second?
Second, second.
Alright, uh, seconded by Charlie, thirded by Larry. So, uh, let's do a roll call vote. Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And Matt's and I. So that one's unanimous. Alright, plugging along here. The, uh, do we wanna do, if anybody's getting in front of them, we have a resignation from the library trustees?
Yeah, that's just an announcement, Matt.
Okay.
So Mary Impalatier resigned from the alternate trustee of the library. She's sold her house and is moving.
Okay.
But they will be, they will be replacing her.
Okay, so I would move to accept her resignation with thanks, if anybody wants to.
I don't think you need to, because she's a trustee of the library.
So we're just announcing?
Yeah, you don't need a letter. Just, they can thank her for her service.
Yeah, I, um, I was wondering why we had that, but thank, thanks to her anyway. Do we want to approve minutes? We have minutes for September 1st, public and non-public.
I can make a motion to accept the non-public and public meetings dated September 1st, 2020, as written.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call vote, Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And Matt's and I.
Make a motion for Selectmen's Public Meetings dated September 8, 2020.
So this is, this is where we have that issue.
Yes, yep. So, uh, Charlie seconded for discussion, so now we're discussing. So, basically, what happened is we were, never had to have, we never had to do it before. We were under the impression we had to vote to pick our selectmen pro temps, but actually, we didn't have to vote as one body. We could simply, um, let the moderator know individually who's filling in for us. So the good news is, we had proper fill-ins. So we just, what I'd like to propose is, we edit the, um, the minutes to show that, and do we have the names here?
Yeah.
Do you have them, Diane?
Um, Bob Dismel, uh, Bob Dismel, town administrator, um, appointed Bob, Robert Donovan Jr.
Yep.
Right, and Kate appointed, uh, Trish.
McCarthy.
Okay.
So I'd like to, uh, strike, if I'm proposing to the board, we strike the vote we had as, as a quorum and replace it with just the appointments as Diane just listed, if anybody wants to, uh, if, if everybody's okay with that.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I will be too.
Okay, so based on that, I'm gonna call for a roll call. Vote on the minutes. So Larry, how do you vote?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And Matt's and I. And it is worth stating here, um, maybe I should really do it when there's more people on, but, you know, kudos to all the election personnel. I don't wanna mention specific names, because I'm gonna forget half of them, but, uh, you know, the town moderator, town clerk, deputy town clerk, all the volunteers, they did an unbelievable job last week, so. People actually, uh, were given a lot of positive feedback, so it's good. And then the real, the real show is November 3rd, but, um, alright, so anybody wanna review non-public session minutes for unsealing? No, okay. Um, why don't we? Is, if I'm backtracking here, uh, or D, I know we need Bob Dismelick for D, I know E, potentially, we can talk about, I'll come back to that. F, we need Roger Hamill. Is he coming on for that, Diane?
He's supposed to, yeah.
G, I think, um, let's talk about G. So we had an email from a member of the planning board. In the email, uh, it was, I had never heard of this position, but it's the Rockingham Transportation Advisory Council. And I believe it's a, is it a subcommittee of the Rockingham Planning Commission? Is that?
Yeah, something like that. The planning board never had, the planning board never had anyone on there.
So the planning board has never had anyone on there for Newton. We have.
To my knowledge, no.
Yeah, we have, one member of the planning board has expressed her desire to be appointed and has to be appointed by the board of selectmen. So my, my, my first question to the board is, do we want to just appoint this person or do we wanna put it out to others to apply so everybody has a chance, or at this point, are we comfortable with just appointing the, the single person?
I'm pretty sure we brought that up at a meeting and no one took part except for, um, that person. Okay. So Larry? Larry, no other, no other planning board member showed an interest?
To my knowledge, no, Chuck. It was just, uh, it was just her that said she would do it. And apparently, when she went to find out if she can do it, was told that it has to be appointed by the board. Now, if you wanna wait and you can confirm with Roger on that, when he comes on, and then we can vote on it at the end. But that's what I remember at the meeting.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
Cause I, you know, truthfully, I don't have a problem with this person at all. I think they do a good job. It's just wanna make sure we've given everybody a, a chance if they had interest, so. And it's, it's not a lifetime appointment, so if, uh, somebody could do it this year and then somebody again next year, you know, that's.
So it's a yearly appointment?
I believe so.
I do have one announcement we could do.
What's that?
Um, just wanted to let the board know that the state election grant reimbursement has been applied for. Um, it was submitted today. That'll cover the cost of some of the absentee ballots, the extra ones that we had to send out.
Excellent.
Nancy question?
Yeah.
Could you send me the email so I can log on to Zoom for the seven o'clock meeting? I'm sorry, I can't find it.
You don't have the agenda?
I have the agenda, but I don't have the Zoom link.
It's right on the agenda.
It's on the, the link is right on the agenda.
Oh, okay, let me go back to that email. Okay, great.
Yeah, you could click right on it.
These guys are teach-to-fish type people. Nancy, I have, like to teach us to fish.
We need to discuss.
Okay, um, is one of them trick or treat? Cause I'd like to wait on that one.
Yeah, no, I, I was just, um, just, you guys start thinking about it. That's all, and probably bring it up on the October 6th meeting, I think.
Larry, it's on the agenda tonight.
Well.
Okay, I'm on our mail now.
Okay.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, is let's talk about it in a half hour or so.
Oh, okay.
Did you have another one we wanna talk about now?
Yeah, I, I thought we were gonna meet live tonight. I wanna show you guys those two sprays. One was like $900 and the other one is $1,800. I think we can get by with the one that costs $8.67 plus materials as test strips.
So we have an explanation of what these things are?
So what it is, it's the defogger. Instead of Tony or, or the fire department or the police department going around with the rag and spray, it's what everybody's using, they're using in all the firehouses. It's just that the, that it's cordless. You walk around, you sweep. It cuts your work time down, um, big time, and you only have to do the building like once a week.
Is this to disinfect the building?
Correct.
Okay.
So, um, I, I told Matt about it and, uh, I said, if we could, if we get it, I'll try to get it covered on the gopher, but we need the Selectmen's approval in case it doesn't get covered on the gopher, that we're gonna eat the cost somewhere.
So, um, I would be, I would be willing to go out and, and purchase this. I think we've, we've spent. spent sadly, and we're all learning about the pandemic, but we've spent this much on these cleanings, actually more so already this year.
I think over $2,000, yeah.
Yeah, so this would be, I think, a smart buy, and fingers crossed, we get the numbers recouped.
Now, what I can do is, I can drop it off at town hall, and Diane can scan it to everybody, and they can look at it. There's no hurry to order it today.
Okay, good.
But I just wanted to put it on the table so you guys can think about it.
What's the cost for the refills, Larry?
There's a whole attachment that I have a price list. You have to buy test strips. Once you mix the chemicals, you have to test it to make sure it's at the right, right level. So, but still, in the long run, it's cheap and it's a lot, it's going to be a lot easier to clean. What we do in Lawrence is we just pass it from house to house. So PD would do their own, the fire department would do their own. Tony obviously can do town hall. If the library can't do it, we can send one of the guys over to do it. It's once a week. It'll probably take them 15 minutes.
Okay.
So I think what I'd like to do is, I like Larry's idea, let's bring it over and, you know, take pictures, show and tell, whatever. But I'd like to get Tony's feedback on what he thinks about it, if it's something he can use kind of easily. Because if, if he can use it easily, it'd be nice to have the, you know, the expertise available.
And you can actually do, you can do all the cruises and you can do the fire trucks and everything with it.
Yeah, cool.
Is there any hazard, Larry, for breathing that stuff? Or do you have to wear a special mask or?
They, they just have to wear the N95 one, not the surgical one, the N95.
Okay.
Which we can, we can get those. And if he doesn't feel comfortable doing it, we can find somebody to do it. Like again, I said, it's only once a week.
Okay.
So let's, let's put this on the agenda for next time. Is that enough time?
Oh, absolutely. I'll drop that stuff off before I go to work tomorrow, and then she can scan it. And then, yeah, we can meet on the, on the next meeting. We can do it.
Cool. Thank you. So I'm going to move to adjourn this public meeting at 6:50.
You want, you don't want to adjourn. You want to-
Recess, recess.
Thank you.
Because we're not done yet.
Thank you, thank you. The word is recess. I'm going to move to recess at 6:58 PM for this public hearing that we have at 7. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call vote. Larry?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And Matt's and I. So we'll talk amongst yourselves, and at 7 PM promptly, we'll begin the public hearing.